Night Chair of the Planning Board, and I call this meeting to order. And I will call the role of members and members of the planning staff who are here for this meeting. Ted Owens.
Here.
Adam Block.
Here.
Martin Jacobs.
I'm here, October 4th.
Yes. October 4th at approximately 11:30 a.m. Paul Alpert.
Here.
And staff, our Planning Director, Lee Newman.
Here.
And our Assistant Planner, Alexandra Clea.
I'm here.
All right, then, our agenda for this meeting basically is to just make sure we're all prepared for the town meeting at 1:00 p.m. today, the special town meeting. And we were provided with a seating chart. You know that we'll sit facing the front, facing the high school or the new building there at Memorial Field on the left in the first row. And there's a seat for each of us in that row. Lee will be available by conference call. We'll turn on the conference call. I will be the one calling in. And Lee and Paul will be on the conference call.
No, Lee and Marty.
Oh, excuse me, misspoke, of course. Lee and Marty will be on the conference call, which I can then put in speaker on my phone if we need, you know, to have everybody here all at once. And we will only turn it on when the meeting starts discussing Articles Six and Seven. And the purpose of linking them in by conference call is particularly in case any amendments are proposed and we have to make the decision on whether to oppose or support the amendment. I haven't heard about any amendments. There really hasn't been much controversy regarding the Carter Mill renovation for the three types of senior housing proposed. So I'm really not expecting that. And then the other purpose would be if there are questions of a factual nature, that we want to consult with Lee before answering or make sure we've looped Marty in before we answer those questions. And Adam would be the one answering the questions, but he may wish to, you know, consult with us. Adam, you had your hand raised.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'm just not sure practically speaking, how easy it's going to be to be able to actually hear either Marty or Lee on the phone? Because I'm not sure that we're going to be, you know, huddled together within six inches of each other around a table. We're going to be spread out nine feet from each chair. So the farthest chair is nine times four, thirty-six feet away?
I understand that. I just feel that it's unlikely if there were a question asked and we were called upon to answer it. And that answer required consulting with one or more other members of the planning board or our planning staff, that we would be stopped from doing that. We will have masks on. We couldn't stand and walk closer to one another. I mean, we can't really huddle one feet away, but something reasonable. And of course, I could, if you feel comfortable, Adam, I can hand the phone, my phone, to you, and you can speak directly to Lee. I mean, that would be helpful.
Okay.
We'll also be able to text.
Right.
Yes, we could text. We can text Lee, that's true, separately from the conference call.
Yes, and I'll have my, yeah, because I'll be on the conference call on my landline, and I'll just have my cellphone totally available for text.
That's what I'm going to do also.
And Lee, you should be able to watch the proceedings live on the Needham Channel website, because obviously you're not going to have access to it.
That's what I'm doing. I had the link. So I'll be watching all of town meetings starting at 1:00.
Don't fall asleep, Lee. No, I mean, yeah. Yeah, Lee, don't fall asleep.
Popcorn popping.
And, you know, I think, Adam, if you wish to consult with the three of us who are there, we can just stand closer to you and you can use your voice to talk to us. Marty, do you feel comfortable that, I mean, you would hear, like, if we were merely consulting about how to answer a question? Is it, if you can't hear us, or we don't really have you in for every word of that discussion, does that seem reasonable? And that we only really make a super effort to put you on speakerphone, get everybody huddled around if we have to make a decision?
Yeah, no, I'm comfortable with that. I mean, I assume that you will convey to me and Lee by phone, if necessary, the sense of what everybody's saying, if I can't hear it, and I can just respond to you, and you can report that to everybody. Yeah, I'm very comfortable with that.
Okay. And I'm not really too nervous about this, because I don't expect a lot of controversy. The only questions that are likely to come up, and I heard before the meeting started, somebody had asked a question about what are the general requirements for affordability for assisted living or memory care units? So maybe we should actually discuss that issue now while we're all together. And maybe Ted, since he manages a continuing care retirement community, can enlighten us on whether he's aware of any requirements. My understanding from, is that, and I think this may have come up at our most recent meeting, in which Ted had some input, it was that because North Hill, for example, is a charity, it is part of its charitable purpose, it allows people whose funds have run low, particularly if they're in the skilled nursing or the assisted living, to continue living there at the rate they can afford. So maybe Ted would like to say something more about that, or about any rules he's aware of, about continuing to support people who can't pay the full freight for assisted living or memory care.
Sure. I am not aware of any requirement in assisted living or memory care for affordable units. And in fact, I would tell you that it is a strange concept, because affordable housing is entirely separate from the mission that you see with assisted living and memory care. It is not at all about the housing. It's about the healthcare. And so I am not aware of any regulations. To me, they don't make any sense whatsoever. And, you know, if there's any issue in this regard, we will certainly address it in the special permit process, but I'm not aware of any.
Yeah. All right.
And Madam Chair.
That is the answer. We can address this during the special permit process. That's the heart of the answer. Yes, Adam?
I was just going to say exactly what you said. I think, I mean, it obviously depends on what the specific question is. The moderator prefers to answer the exact specific question raised. But I think that what we are going to do is defer to it, to us, we'll consider it on a special permit process. This is not, you know, this is not a hearing for the application. That process will start later.
Can I just mention one thing, though?
Yes, Marty Jacobs speaking.
I think that's right, but I don't think, and I'm certainly open to hearing disagreement on this, I don't think we would have the authority to raise the affordability requirement above twelve and a half percent during the special permit process. That's one aspect of affordability that I don't think we would have the authority to do. I don't know what others think.
Well, I think that we've locked ourselves in on the independent living side by locking into twelve and a half percent. Whether we can go above that in the special permitting process, we certainly can't go below it.
Well, we certainly can't go below it, but I doubt we have the authority to go above it.
We negotiated that with this developer when we got to the twelve and a half percent. They were, they originally pushed back on that, wanted to make it ten percent, which would have given them one less unit, and we pushed back against them. And they found a way to add an affordable housing unit so that they could offset. And so they accepted it. I mean, we negotiated that quite vociferously. So I don't know that we're going to go there at the special permit process on the independent living side. On the assisted living side, I don't know whether we have the authority to say to them, we want you to bring in people, ab initio on their application, who can't necessarily afford your place. It's my understanding that our applicant is going to be a for-profit organization, not a charity. So I don't know how far we can push them, other than threatening to just not issue the permit, unless they give us some assurances that either at the beginning, if we want to go there, they take in people who can't, a certain percentage of people who can't afford their prices, or if they do allow people in, they won't kick people out. That they will find a way to allow people to stay in their units if they run out of money.
Marty raises an interesting question.
That was Paul Alpert speaking.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry that I didn't identify myself, Madam Chair.
And Adam Block has a response.
Well, I think Marty raises an interesting point, Paul, that he's questioning the authority the planning board has in making that requirement.
Right.
And I think we can't comment on that until we have a legal opinion identifying what jurisdiction we have.
Yes, I think these are all issues for today, to say these are all valid concerns that the planning board shares with the town meeting member, and we plan to examine them during the special permit process.
Bingo.
Yes.
I'm on board.
All right. Is there anything else with regard to Articles Six and Seven?
I think the only other issue we talked about was the way I handled the map change article. I think Jean's right. I think it's made clear enough in the first article that it only, that it doesn't involve the residential zone area where the parking lot is located. I think the description that I did on the map article could have been clearer, so that it was totally consistent. But I think it's clear in the articles. I don't think it needs to be addressed.
And if I may, if I may say, the only reason I brought this up after receiving, or after looking at Adam's presentation, was a particular plan that we showed where the site was outlined in yellow, and it wasn't a distinction made where the line was for the overlay district. But upon reviewing the explanation in the warrant, it's very clear that, you know, the overlay district is leaving out the area that's presently in the residential B district. And, oh, but that, and I know Adam has something more to say, but I don't want to forget to say this, we will want to have the articles considered together. Lee, is it your expectation that the moderator will call for such a motion? Or is that something we need to do?
I think it's something that you need to do.
Okay.
I think it's something that you need to do. I had mentioned to him, when I had reached out to him for an opinion on recording process, that we wanted to have these two articles discussed together and voted separately.
All right. Okay, Six and Seven, discussed together but vote separately.
He already knows. Mike Fee already knows about that.
Yeah, he does. So he may call for a motion, or if he doesn't, I'll immediately, you know, they want you to not just stand up from your seat, but actually go in a line to the microphone, presumably right when the article is called, there won't be anybody at the microphone. I can just jump up, go to the microphone, et cetera. Okay, I'll do that. And Adam, I'm sorry, I wanted to make sure I didn't forget to ask that, so I cut you off, but now Adam Block has something to say about.
I think I was just going to say that I apologize for not being more precise in my presentation. There were a number of details, which I let ride in the actual warrant itself and the explanation, and called everyone's attention at the outset of my presentation to those. I referred and referenced those documents. This was, you know, trying to balance a bit more of a bigger picture with still sufficient details so people understood what we were really talking about. But, you know, you were certainly right to recognize that there, you know, that that map, I should have been more clear in my presentation, because I used the GIS map, which just reflects the property. It doesn't necessarily reflect the SRB zone, and I didn't make that clear, so.
Yeah, but I think all of us agree that the presentation is very good.
The most important part was finding a way to turn the video off of me.
All right. Anything else on Articles Six or Seven?
Adam, do you want to raise the issue about the Finance Committee presentation?
So.
The Finance, excuse me, Paul Alpert, the Finance Committee presentation with regard to Articles Six and Seven, or the Finance?
Yes.
I'm afraid I forgot.
Well, I spoke to Adam about this earlier, and we were talking about the fact that they, and I haven't seen it, but Adam was telling me that they seem to have focused more on the developers rather than on the zoning article. And so we may get questions based on that about the developers. And I, my position is that we should deflect those questions and say that these are all, this is a zoning article, there's no guarantee that this developer will develop this property. This is all, we anticipate that this developer will apply for a special permit, but they may not. We will give it a thorough hearing at the special permit process, and there are no guarantees for this developer as to what will develop at the special permit process. I think that's what our position should be.
This would not be, this is Martin Jacobs talking, would not be the first time one party came in to seek something like a zoning change, and it ended up, a different party ends up being the actual developer. We've seen that before.
Yeah.
But I mean, either way, I mean, I think what we're talking about here is FinCom went through and did, like Marty said, refer more about the development and the developers than about the zoning itself, which was an interesting distinction that, you know, we instead focused, which I think is our place, and I think that's the message. We're here to vote on a zoning article, not on a particular application. If we're successful in adopting this bylaw change, we'll have ample opportunity. This project, you know, this bylaw change has been on our agenda in five meetings since May. So there has been ample opportunity for the public to participate and question any aspect behind this thing, and we welcome that as part of an ongoing public process.
Yes, that seems like a reasonable answer. I think Ted has a comment also. Ted Owens.
I understand that the recommendation from the Finance Committee is that this article, these two articles be adopted? In which case, don't anticipate any questions.
I agree with Ted. I really don't anticipate questions about the developer. And I did watch the Finance Committee presentation, and it seemed to me that the emphasis was on the developer, not to be at all critical of the developer, but instead, in the direction more of saying, this is an experienced operator or developer. In other words, they didn't say this, but we have confidence that this project will go forward and be a well-run project. You know, they didn't say that, but I had that idea. That was behind what they were saying. And of course, in all our experiences as attorneys, and Ted as a business man, and Adam is a real estate person, you know very well that when it comes to a particular site in a particular project, very often a separate LLC or whatever form it's going to take, is organized to own that particular site. And we'd expect that, that wouldn't be unusual, you know? But it would be a wholly, most likely a wholly owned by the company that's been the applicant. I don't know that we need to get into that, though, but that's not unusual.
Just a reminder, I did send out, just so you have it handy, the questions that the Finance Committee specifically asked, and the responses that were given by the developer to those questions.
Oh, yes.
I shared that with you earlier at the time when it was provided back in August, but just to make sure that you had it handy, I emailed it out again this morning.
Yes, I saw that, and I haven't yet printed it out, but Adam, make sure, can you print it out, Adam, yourself, so you have it? Or should I do that and bring one for you?
I'll take care of that, too.
Yeah, because that would be a very good way to answer any questions that are along a similar lines.
I think the only other piece of information I sent out earlier, I think either this week, I think it was this week, was just that, you know, the question about how would this development affect Needham subsidized housing inventory initially, and then in the long term? And I accessed that information, so you could answer that question should it come up.
And if that comes up, I'm actually only going to address it on a short-term basis. Everything else is just conjecture, I think. But Lee, I do have the attachments that I'll print out. I don't see, this is just the material that they provided to FinCom.
Yes, the questions are embedded in the longer document, the Residence at Carter Mill.
Oh, I see, I have that. I've got it. Very good.
Those were some attachments that I think relate to those questions.
Got it, okay. I have the one thing I hadn't printed yet, but I'll print it now. Madam Chair, I have a question about Article Seventeen.
Article Seventeen, yes, the resolution.
That's right, the Citizens Petition, dealing with racism in town. And my understanding is the Select Board is looking to refer the question back to the Select Board.
Yes.
And I raise it because, you know, part of the question really deals with systemic racism as part of zoning, and any kind of inherent bias. And I wasn't sure what other town meeting members and the planning board as a whole felt about the referral, which would give a bit more of a structured opportunity to, you know, to look into the matter.
Can I mention something on this?
Yes, Marty.
My understanding is that what the Select Board is requesting has only been partially stated by Adam. The, what they are asking is that the question be referred to the Select Board with an understanding that the Select Board will bring it back to town meeting at the next town meeting in the spring. So it's not going to go into a limbo. It's presumably going to be studied and brought back six months or so from now. So it's a little different.
Right. They weren't trying, they're not, I didn't mean to suggest, and I'm sorry if I did, that they're trying to just throw it into the ether. But they do, I know that the Select Board is looking at this in a number of different areas. One of those areas that they may look at will be a function, could be a function of zoning, as part of this other organization that's been created to study this. And yes, they will, they do intend to come back and report back to town meeting, you know, in May. But do we, in which case, I tend to support the motion or the idea to refer this to the Select Board for that purpose. But I'm curious what the rest of the board thinks.
I might say that my own thoughts are, what's the difference? The resolution asks that these issues be studied. The Select Board says, we want it referred back to us for study. And I really don't see what advantage there is to having, to referring back as compared with simply adopting the article. And I fear that a vote to refer back will be perceived by the proponents as a negative vote. And I personally prefer to support the article, though I don't intend to speak on it.
My two cents worth, if I may?
Yes, Ted Owens.
My two cents worth primarily as a town meeting member. The reference to planning is that there is a certain segment of opinion, that the whole issue of single-family housing zoning is racist. I believe that that, personally, I believe that's an extreme position. And I do not believe that the best way for us to establish racial justice, equity, and tolerance in the town of Needham is through zoning. I believe it's a social issue, not a zoning issue. I also support the motion to refer back, because the selectmen already have this going. They have their own group, and it's, I think, a broader group than is represented by the group that brings this Citizens Petition. Furthermore, if you study the website from the group, they actually have somewhat of a hidden agenda. What they really want to do is to fund the police. And I see this as an attempt to get the lever in the door, so that they can come back and say, but town meeting said that it supports our position. And oh, by the way, this is our position. This is one of the things that I really don't like about special town meetings, that sometimes articles are presented at a special town meeting not given a proper airing, not given a proper vetting, not given an opportunity for discussion of the pros and cons in advance. And I think that this is one of those, you know, one of those things that we need to think about the consequences. And personally, I don't think that the selectmen are racist. I believe that I trust the selectmen to have a broad outreach to all aspects of the town community to address this issue. I believe they're serious, and therefore I do not support this article, and I will vote for the referral.
I guess the question before us as a group is, does the planning board want to take a position as planning board on Article Seventeen? And my suspicion is, as a group, we don't. Certainly, everybody can speak individually, but as a group, I doubt that we want to take a position now. I certainly would want to be sure that if it is referred back or referred to the Select Board, that we have an opportunity as a board to study whether we want to take a position on it next time it comes up. But right now, I'm not, I don't think we're prepared to take a position as a group.
So that was Marty Jacobs speaking on whether we should take a position or not. Paul Alpert.
Yes, thank you. I agree.
Yes, thank you. I, 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 I agree with Marty. We should, we should not take a position as a board. The motion to refer back is something that if that passes, I think we, we should go back to the Select Board. And Gene and I can do that. We have a, a Chair's Vice Chair's meeting scheduled for October 15th to sit with the Chair and Vice Chair of the Select Board. So if that motion to refer passes at, at the 15th, we can, we can politely bring up the issue that there is a zoning portion of this. And so we would, we would respectfully request that they, they consult with us as, as, as they go forward on, on, on the zoning portion of the resolution. And leave it at that for today. And the rest is just our individual positions on the resolution. My understanding is that this is just a resolution requesting the planning board to look at the issue. So I, I don't, I don't, I don't see where there's much of a difference between referring it back and thus the resolution either passes or fails. It's been, it's been raised, you know, and the Select Board's going to do something about it.
Yes, and, yes, and Adam, you had something further?
The, I, I would actually suggest that we take a position that the Planning Board, that the Planning Board unanimously opposes any form of racial discrimination. And further supports, you know, and further supports an, an effort to ensure equity throughout the town. And we're open to reviewing, in other words, I want to make a distinction between a vote to refer to, to refer to, back to the Select Board doesn't make you a racist. Because I think there's a negative implication, there could be a negative implication. And I think that as a board, we may just want to say that, you know, that we, and just to make that distinction, that's all.
Paul, you respond?
Yes. I'm, I'm going to disagree with Adam that we as a board should be taking any position today. I don't, I don't think today is, is the time or the place for the Planning Board to be taking a planning board position. I agree with Adam that the Planning Board should not, you know, should, should have a policy of not being racist and to do what we can and what we have the statutory authority to do to, to, to support a diverse and a non-racist town. But I don't see that as something for today. And, and as I said, if this is referred back, or even if it's just a resolution that either passes or fails, the Select Board is going to do something and we should insert ourselves as part of that process in the future. And that we can discuss that at a future planning board meeting, but I don't, I don't see that we need to do that at town meeting today. And I'm reluctant to do it. If we, if we want to speak individually, that's fine. I, I don't, I don't think we should speak as a board.
I'd like to speak as Chair to say that I agree. Even though planning and zoning, even though zoning is mentioned in the resolution, there are many, many issues mentioned in the resolution. And it's only, it only marginally concerns us. I, I don't want to be taking a position in all kinds of things that come before our town meeting that the planning, that's not really at the heart of the planning board's work. So, yes, Paul?
Yeah, I'm looking at the time. It's, it's 10 after 12. We all have to get to, well, four of us have, have to get to Memorial Field by, by quarter of one or so. And Gene and I did want to bring up the, the two ZPA articles on churches and as to whether the Planning Board wants to take a position on those.
Yes, thank you very much, Paul. So unless somebody feels they really want to make a motion and second it and have a vote on taking a position on Article 17, I propose that we move on and discuss Articles 11 and 12. Because as I just said, when I talked about the role of the Planning Board and what I concern, what we concern ourselves with, I think Articles 11 and 12 do concern the Planning Board. And I'll explain why, but let me make sure everybody's satisfied to move on. Is that all right?
I am.
Okay, okay. Then, as you may know, Article 11 is to appropriate CPA funds for renovations to the porch structure with columns and, and cornice of the Baptist Church on Great Plain Avenue. And Article 12 is to appropriate CPA funds. And in both cases, it's only a part of the cost. And the major part of the cost will be borne by the church, churches respectively. And Article 12 is on the, for the Unitarian Church, for the bell tower, for the, for the renovation of the bell tower and the use of new materials for the bell tower that will preserve and prolong its life. So the, this, of course, they, they were proposed unanimously by the Community Preservation Committee, supported unanimously by the Select Board. But the Finance Committee has come out, I, I'm not sure it's unanimous, it might be, against both of these articles, raising questions about whether these, this is a proper use of community preservation funds. And in, I, I viewed the FinCom's presentation. And they, the presenters don't come out and say that it's because these are churches. They say we should, it was really kind of confusing, but they seem to be saying we would only support CPA funds for historic preservation if the building itself were open to the, to the general public. I mean, the programs are all generally for the public. But in, in the case of each of the churches, they do have non-church functions occurring at, on the church property. I don't remember exactly what was said about the Baptist Church, but the Unitarian Church has a daycare, a, a dancing school that operates out of there. And of course, we all know that it has the folk, folk music performances out of there. So I'll stop. I just wanted to give you the background in case you hadn't seen the presentations. But the reason I think we should support it, we should support the, the articles is this was very well articulated by a Select Board member, Mo Handel. And he talked about this being historic structure on the state and local, both of them being historic structures on state and local list of historic structures. Pointed out that the rooms are used in these buildings for nonprofits and community uses. And that as part of a funding agreement, those churches will continue to allow those uses for such purposes. And what I'm looking for is what he said about the fabric. Yes, this, these buildings are really part of the fabric of the center of the town and part of the Needham Center streetscape since the 19th century. And I would propose that we support this article because of the Planning Board's long, long interest and concern for the town center. So. Anybody else? Yes, Adam?
Madam Chair, so just to make a further clarification, the, the FinCom's opposition was based on, on both articles on the concept that while they support community preservation, they, they oppose providing public money for private land and private ownership. Regardless of the fact that it's open either on a free basis or on a for rent basis to the public. And secondly, Mo's position raised the question of church, church and state. And what, and his distinction was that the funds are not used for the sanctuary. And because they're for external renovations and not relating to the sanctuary, that it's not an issue of church and state.
Yes, he certainly did make, make that clear. But the FinCom did not discuss that issue in its own presentation. That's all I wanted to say about that. Paul Alpert?
Yes, I, I, I need to start by, by stating that I am the Planning Board's representative on the Community Preservation Committee. And I had to recuse myself on the article on the Baptist Church because a lawyer in my office represents the Baptist Church and actually represented the Baptist Church specifically on some legal issues that, that dealt with this article. But having said that and made that and put that on the record, I think we are discussing, and what I'm going to discuss is the use of CPC funds in general, not specific to the Baptist Church or here. I, I will state that Mo Handel's presentation was very, very carefully stated in, in order to make sure that, that he, he was presenting this as falling within the Acton case, which was mentioned before. I don't remember if we were on the record when it was mentioned. So I just want to state that I, I disagree with the Finance Committee's position as stated by Adam Block. I have not seen the Finance Committee's presentation. I, I think the statute is clear that CPC funds can be used for private property that meets the definition of historic structures, which is very carefully defined in, in the, in the statute. And that we as a planning board should support the use of CPC funds to preserve the historic character of those buildings that meet the definition of historic structures for CPC purposes. And, and, and we should support these articles because these are two historic churches within the town.
That sounds so.
Two historic structures within the town.
Two historic, now, that is so good. I wonder if somebody would like to make that as a motion. And, and then we can discuss the motion. So we make sure we're moving forward in time here.
Before doing that, can I just get a quick synopsis of the Acton case that you're talking about?
Oh, I think that's impossible to do, Marty, in the time constraint where it's already 20 after 12. But yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll try to summarize to say that my reading of the Acton case is that you can use CPC funds or CPA funds for parts of a church which are totally secular in nature and do not have any religious connotations or portions. And the example that is given in the Acton case is if you have stained glass windows that depict a religious scene, you cannot use CPA funds to renovate that. But if you're dealing with a structural beam, for example, which has no religious artifacts on it, and it's just a structural beam and that's what you're, you're spending the funds on, yes, that's permissible. I think those are the two extremes. Like everything, there are things that can be in a gray area.
Is that an SJC case?
Yes, it is. Yeah, I, I printed out several pages of it. And I'll bring it along if there's a moment. Oh, Marty, you won't be.
That's okay.
You won't be there, but if I.
I trust Paul's reading, you know.
Okay.
That's fine.
It's Kaplan v. Acton 479, Mass. 69.
KAP?
CAP, C-A-P-L-L-A-N versus Town of Acton 479, Mass. 69.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. And in that case, and the, the SJC referred the case back to the lower court, giving the guidance based on, based on an earlier case. Commonwealth School Committee of Springfield, which had to do with funding for disabled children who might be going to a private school that might be religious. And set out a three-pronged case, then went through this and, and sent it back for more factual discovery by the lower court with regard to whether the particular things that we're going to be doing at that, for the Acton Church were consistent with that ruling.
And this is Paul Alpert again. It is my very informal understanding through the grapevine that we will not see anything coming out of that because when it was referred back, it's my understanding that the case was settled.
Yes, and the clearly, clearly the SJC gave guidance that the use of these funds for stained glass windows would, would, would not meet their test. So Marty, you had something more to say?
No, no, I'm good.
And also, but I might mention with regard to the facts here, another factor was whether they would be giving substantial support to the church. And I think that the CPC and Paul, you, you could agree or not, was careful to make sure that the town's contribution was, was, you know, matched at least by the church's contribution to these projects. So that it wasn't, wouldn't be considered a substantial contribution to, to the church. And of course, it's only a small part of the structure of the church in any event, in both cases. Yes?
I may quickly answer Gene before she calls on Ted. The, the, not only am I personally familiar with the Acton case, but I did have to recuse on one of the articles. Peter Pignator, who is the Chair of, of, of the CPC, is also a lawyer and he very thoroughly familiarized himself with the Acton case and related cases. And we also informally consulted with David Tobin on this issue before he died. And so the CPC was very careful to make sure that we fit within, to, to the best of our ability to do it. Because the Acton cases is, is, is very difficult to read sometimes. Was, was, was very careful to make sure that we fit within the requirements of, of, of the Acton case.
Very good. So that's a comfort. And also, I want to mention, because it came in very late, and Ted, I will get you in just one sec, but I want to tell Marty that, because he can print it out. If you look at the emails that have been coming through, oh, no, no, it might not be by email. Go to the website where you see the presentations and you'll see a link in the question and answer part. Carefully outline what consultation occurred with Town Council David Tobin regarding these articles. Pretty much along the lines that Paul Alpert said.
Okay.
And the others, I, I printed it out and I'll pass it along as you want to read it as we're sitting there. Ted Owens?
Just a couple of comments. It never, in my wildest dreams, occurred to me that this meeting would last an hour. I thought, I thought it would be 10 minutes. And I'm not quite yet ready to go to town meeting. So I cannot stay on this call until quarter of one. I think the issue in front of us is not whether or not we support this article because I personally, these two articles, because I personally do support them. And I do see the distinction between the structure and, you know, the religious purpose. And I do find that these two structures have historical significance and therefore have an impact. The question is really whether the Planning Board should take a position. And, and I have to say, the very fact that we are discussing this this morning for the first time is all the reason, it's the same as I just said about Article 17. If we wanted to have these detailed conversations, we should have done so long ago. That I don't think that we have had even an opportunity among ourselves to talk about the pros and cons. I have no problem if somebody asks, does the Planning Board have an opinion? If we express our support, but I would not volunteer an opinion. I would not ask to be recognized on behalf of the, of the Planning Board. And if someone wants to make a message, a motion that we endorse these articles, I ask them to do so. And let's move on because I. that we endorse these articles, I ask them to do so. And let's move on because I have to get going.
I agree. We all need to get going. If, if somebody wants to make a motion, and I understand that Ted feels there hasn't been sufficient discussion. But if want to make a motion and somebody second it, let's vote on it and let's, Paul, perhaps you would be the one to make the motion because you had some modelist wording there.
I, I would make the motion, but I'm going to agree with Ted and say at 12:25 at the 1 o'clock town meeting, it's too rushed. If this article fails, if these articles fail, I would like to see the planning board in the future take a position in support of the use of CPC funds for private historic structures in the town. But that's for a future discussion. I will agree with Ted that it's, it's too late and too rushed to make a formal position.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. It sounds like we've finished our agenda and we're ready to adjourn the meeting and get to the town meeting.
So. I move to adjourn.
Marty Jacobs has made a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Paul Alpert seconds.
Okay, Adam Block has something to say about that.
Sorry, I, I thought we're continuing this.
Oh, that's right.
We're not adjourning this.
Oh, Adam, you're wonderful.
Marty, withdraw your.
It's withdrawn. Thank you very much, Adam.
Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn.
No, to continue.
To continue to, to a certain place. And, and, and we may, and we may re.
Reconvene.
Reconvene. And the certain place is at the special town meeting at the Memorial Field site.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Alpert?
Hi.
Mr. Owens?
Hi.
Mr. Block?
Hi.
And the Chair is aye. And we will see most of you, all but Marty, at the special town meeting. And as we said, he'll be connected.
Hi, Alex.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.